Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our August 21st, 2018 Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees meeting. I call the meeting to order. Dr. Hannah and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Murray.
Good evening.
I have the opportunity to introduce to you all Ms. Josselman Duran today. Josselman is a 10-year-old 5th grader currently attends McWillian Elementary Montessori School under the leadership of Dr. Sarah Harper. She's the daughter of Katrelle and Shara Duran and has three siblings. She loves to sing, read, and play basketball with her friends. She enjoys learning Spanish. Josselman is a member of the White Oak Church of Christ Holiness where she is an active member of the choir and Sunday School activities. In addition to her typical schoolwork, Josselman is a student of Totos Nino Spanish Academy where she continues to develop her passion for Spanish as a second language. I present to you one of Jackson Public Schools' own, Ms. Josselman Duran.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now say the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish. Hijo lea tade a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos.
Yes. Thank you so much, Josselman. Please stand a minute to have your photograph taken. We are so proud of you. I know your parents are as well. Thank you for joining us. Do we have District Elder Anthony Moore with us tonight? Yes, sir. Please join us. Elder Moore. District Elder Anthony Moore is the fourth of 10 children born to the late Reverend Quincy and Evangelist Rosie Moore of Richland, Mississippi. He is a licensed and ordained minister with the Pentecostal Churches of the Apostolic Faith International. At the tender age of five, he asked his mom to dress him as a preacher for Career Day at school. At the age of 19, he accepted the call on his life. From a lineage of preachers, District Elder Moore has been preaching for over 20 years. In 2018, God birthed through his ministry, City of Hope Church, where he is senior pastor. He is a graduate of University of Southern Mississippi, Bellhaven University, and Mississippi College. He is employed with the Jackson Public School District. Elder Moore is married to Tanya and they have twins Ashton and Ashlyn. Thank you so much for joining us, District Moore.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Harrison, to the Board members, also to Energy Superintendent Dr. Murray. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you a few words of encouragement. There was a very influential and successful businessman who decided one day to take a sabbatical. Before leaving, he called three of his vice presidents in and told them that he wanted to leave and wanted them to handle his affairs while he was away. He portioned the business out into three divisions, giving one 5/8ths, one 2/8ths, and giving one 1/8th of the business. And at some time, he went away and asked them to use their expertise to garner development in those areas. When the owner returned, he called a board meeting to see the progress of the business. He found that one with the 5/8ths and one with 2/8ths had doubled their increases. But he found with the one with the 1/8th that simply, he stated, simply had done nothing with his investment. He chose to be comfortable. He chose not to be creative. He chose not to stretch himself. The owner was disappointed and wanted to know why did he hide and not use what he had been given. The VP was more focused on what others thought, what he saw, and did not give all of the abilities that he had to that particular purpose. In other words, the owner already knew that he had divine potential and that one had given him with the 1/8th, that he had the capabilities to be successful. He knew his strengths. He knew that he could do it. Simply speaking, we all have been given a certain level of talents, giftings, grace, and measure. So it doesn't matter whether we are a board member or the superintendent or a centered office figure, a parent, a community member, a food service worker, a teacher, or even a child or student in the classroom. All of us have a part to play in the bigger design of Jackson Public Schools. Now is the time for us to embrace our gifts, to work together, to strive, to endure, to push Jackson Public Schools all the way to the top. Whatever position we have, it's important that we don't hide it. We don't hide our gifts. We don't hide our talents. But we continue to be creative. We continue to stretch each other. We are blessed today. We are blessed when we work together. We are blessed when we lift our children up. We are blessed when we go and do things like pass a bond issue. He said, "You will be blessed in the city. You will be blessed in the field. You will be blessed when we do these things together." In Jackson, we cannot hide it. We are a beacon light of hope for every child in the city of Jackson. Let's rise up and continue to build stronger schools together, for we are truly better together. Remember, don't hide it. Use it. This is the message of hope. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Elder Moore. That was a wonderful message. Thank you so much. Please stay and have your picture taken with Dr. Luckett. Let the record show that we have a quorum established. We have five board members seated and one board member participating by telephone. Item three, the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear motion to adopt the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been adopted. Item four, reading and approval of the minutes. Board members, the minutes were circulated to us earlier by Ms. Williams, August 9th and August 15th, a regular board meeting and a special board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
I did have one order. On the August 9th one, I believe on the bids to approve, we had, I had made a request that the correction be noted. There was a typo in the explanatory materials for the Renaissance contract.
I gave that change.
Oh, you did? Okay. Okay, great. I just hadn't seen the, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that careful read and thank you, Ms. Williams and Attorney Turner for addressing that. Once again, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as distributed with the correction noted?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved. Ms. Turner, do we have comments for public participation?
Yes, Board members, you have two persons who've signed up to address you for public participation. The first is, I'm not sure about the pronunciation, Alicia Jones, who would like to address you regarding insurance for all students to be provided for all school levels in JPS, not just high school.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Good evening.
After recent studies and my oldest son bringing documents for me to sign, I realized that the Mississippi High School Association give out athletic parental clearance forms in which it states that the Jackson Public School District does not pay any expenses in care for any accident involving a student on school property or participating in school activities, and does not provide health or accidental insurance for participants in athletic activities. Well, my concern with this is there is a supplemental and a secondary plan, but we did not get that information at the beginning of school. Football season has started. Students have entered into school. Now, from my understanding, this is, and I have read it in last year's program, that this has been around, but I've never received the pamphlet. I did get one the other day and I have read it. It's a good program. I encourage every student to get it. It's $14 and it's $55 for athletes and $14 for any additional sport. I also have an issue with them saying that middle school students are not insured, period, by the school district, whereas two high school students are. So I have questions in regards to, are we looking into getting this done? Because it seems like this is something that every student should have, at least some type of liability from the school district.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones, for your remarks and that information. Do we have another?
Next is Senator Solomon Norwood, who would like to address you.
Good evening, President Harrison and Dr. Murray, to the Board members. I come tonight basically to ask you to delay your search institution of a superintendent to reason. First reason, schools are starting and to disrupt the atmosphere of the learning, the parents, the administrative faculty and staff, I think is disingenuous at this time. Second of all, if we reopen the search, I think we have a better opportunity to select a better field of candidates and name a candidate come June or July of next year. I think that Jackson Public School, and I've been around Jackson Public School for a while working with the school board, been around, I was at the Department of Ed when all the takeover was there. I think Jackson Public School, this is probably one of our greatest opportunities to get this thing right. If we fail this time, unfortunately, I believe it's going to be a nail in our coffin. So I'm coming today to ask you to withhold the naming or the selection of a superintendent until we can get the right person at this particular time to do the right thing to get this district on track to be successful. I'd like to commend you for, Dr. Murray, and to the Board for continuing. I remember back in 2005, when we first started talking about having prayer for our board meetings, they said we couldn't do it. We did it and it has maintained. So I think that this is another opportunity for us to do something that may be uncharacteristic or may be out of the norm, but I think it's the right thing for us to do and this is the right time for us to do it. So I appreciate your time and your attention and I encourage you again, let's get it right this time. For the students, we passed the bond issue. And in passing that bond issue, there was a lot of questions, there were a lot of concerns going throughout the community, and this is one of the points that the persons that we talked about. So let's, Dr. Murray's been around, I'd like to applaud him for the job that he's done, and I don't think anybody would have any challenge with him staying on at least until 2019 and we can get a permanent superintendent in place to care out the wishes of the bond issue and make Jackson Public School what we all know that it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Senator Norwood. We appreciate your remarks.
That's all.
That's all. We do have item A under public participation, Partnership for Healthy Mississippi. Kelly Lovelace, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Lovelace. I'm the school counselor and the school health coordinator, or school health council coordinator at Barack Obama Magnet, and I am pleased to be here with you today just to share the successes that we've had at our school and advancing health and wellness and our partnership or collaboration with the Partnership of a Healthy Mississippi who are funded by the Kellogg Foundation. And the partnership has provided us with assistance for four years now to help us to focus on a coordinated approach to school health as mandated by the Mississippi Healthy Schools and Students Act. And each year, we write an action plan to help us with our weaknesses to show improvement. And I want to share a few of our plans with you for this upcoming school year. We are planning on hosting a training session for our teachers on the proper administration of CPR and AED. We always have a very popular nacho ordinary PTA night every November, and we are planning on reaching out to our parents, engaging our families and community with healthy meal planning. And we are also trying to work with our teachers to incorporate homework assignments that will involve family engagement and health-related topics. But I just, we're really excited about school health at Barack Obama. We have a lot going on. I invite you to come visit us and see what we're doing. And I just want to thank you for all of your support and hard work, and I know that you will continue to support us in improving health and wellness at our school. So thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. We appreciate your work. Any items under item six, Dr. Murray, discipline cases? None?
We have no discipline cases.
Item seven, Dr. Merritt, a cap update?
Great evening to Dr. Harrison and Board and Dr. Murray. Just a brief cap update and the written reports will follow at the first board meeting in September, but we have met as a team. We have our go-forward plans developed and as it relates to implementing the approved corrective action plan for standards. We've been in constant communication and contact with the Office of Accreditation at MBE, and there will be some standards that we will begin to request for clearance in September, and we will notify you of those in writing in a September report.
Thank you so much for the update, Dr. Merritt, and we look forward to the written report, and we appreciate your work and your team's work. I see no more comments here?
No, next item. He's saving some steps.
Okay, saving you some steps. Thank you so much. Superintendent?
That's under Superintendent's report, it's cap update.
Right, right.
We have one item for Superintendent's report tonight. Each year, we conduct a comprehensive needs assessment with our parents, our students, and teachers, and we are required to communicate to the Board the results of that comprehensive needs assessment. And so at this time, Dr. Merritt will provide the update and overview of that comprehensive, the results of the comprehensive needs assessment.
Great, thank you. And we have some materials here.
And so at this time, we're circulating the report as well as the needs assessment in its entirety, and I will just kind of give a brief overview of it. We'll review the law, the district or the LEA's responsibility, define need, talk about who completed the surveys, give some sample questions in the domains that it covered, and review some data. And so just as a reminder, last year, Jackson Public Schools received approximately $16 million in Title I funds. The overall goal of Title I funds, according to law, is to, at minimum, help students reach proficiency in which that's supplemental in nature. Once the district does what it's supposed to do, Title I is the gravy, so to speak, to support and supplement the instructional process. This next slide just talks about we are required, not only as a district, as a local education agency, but schools are required to also conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. And included, who do we survey in that? That's parents, that's staff, and students. Next year, we want to include stakeholders. ESSO really encourages us to include the community and get their input in this as Next slide. I'll move it to the next slide, please. So let's talk about the need. Need refers to the gap or discrepancy between the present state of what is and the desired state of what should be. The need is neither the present nor the future state, it is the gap between them. And so, again, we want to close that achievement gap overall. So one thing, one data point that we looked at is our third grade assessment. It is our hope and our goal to ensure that 100% of our students are proficient on the third grade assessment. Of course, that's scoring level four or level five. What is? According to recent MAP data, 29% of our third graders scored level four or level five. And I want to take a note to point out, as you all recall, this year when we took that assessment and they took, we had a 94.5 passing rate overall on the third grade assessment, but students had to make a two or higher. Proficiency is defined as making score in a level four or five, and writing is included on that component as well. So what our goal is to focus on that 71% of those students and getting them towards And so the inquiry process produces a strong beam of thought directed to illuminate a focus area of student need and adult practice. We see what the student need is, and so we must focus on the adult practice and getting our students where they need to be. Okay, so how and who? The survey was administered in April online to parents, students, and staff. The domains that we looked at were leadership, demographics, professional development, curriculum and instruction, student achievement, school culture and climate, and family and community engagement. And some of the sample questions were, and I want to just, overall, the survey specifically from the parents and students was positive. There was nothing really negative out there. But some of the sample questions included, my teacher talks, from the parents, my teacher talks to him or her about her attendance, my child receives special help when he or she is struggling in class, my child grades are updated in an active parent on a weekly basis. Student questions, I use technology when I'm learning, my teacher talks to me about my attendance. I receive academic help before, during, or after school. And staff questions included, students follow the expected behavior, students demonstrate respect for teaching staff, and the school offers parent workshops and/or training sessions. So in terms of the parents' needs assessment, we had 1,722 parents to participate in the needs assessment. And so what we tried to do was focus in on, when we looked at, 79% of our parents said that their children are communicating to them that their teacher, they're having attendance talks, they're talking about academic help. Active parent was one of those things that stood out, and that's where the greatest percentage was with parents. And that's something that we really want to focus in on. And our parents definitely said that teachers contact them when it comes to their child's behavior. And so the domains that we looked at and is correlated according to color, the student achievement, family and community engagement, and school culture and climate. In terms of the student comprehensive needs assessment, the students that took the assessment were 4th and 5th graders on the elementary level, 6th and 7th graders on the middle school level, and all of the high school students. One thing that was unique, if we can go back, students talked about the use of technology, and that's an area we see that we need to grow in because 59% of our students say, yes, our teachers are using technology, but 41% say that there are not. So that, we know that's an area of focus. Attendance talks, that's the thing where we need to focus in and making sure that teachers are really having those attendance talks with their students because we see a discrepancy there from what parents say and what students said with attendance talks, academic talks, and academic help. A common denominator, and those things are common, but active parent was something that we noticed that the percentages were close for students and parents, and that students are wanting to know about how they perform, and it is the district's expectation that that's updated weekly. So that's something we really want to monitor closely to make sure that students are aware, as well as parents are aware, how their children are performing on a weekly basis. And the staff, we had 1,678 participants, and this included certified as well as classified staff. They said that their principal is talking to them about using data, they're communicating the standards, they're showing, they're talking about how to use STAR or using STAR, and they're trying to address the learning styles, and they have had discussions about the crisis management plan. Those were strong, those were some strong indicators there. However, they did report that we want to look at the 43%, although we had 57% when it comes to the student behavior, but we want to look at that 43% there that says that student behavior is a concern, and the 38% that say positive peer interaction is a concern, and the 45% that say the respect of the teaching staff. Those things that, that's a little bit of a great number of where we're not reaching some staff in some certain areas that we feel that we need to address. Next slide. So what do we do with this? We have conducted the needs assessment. Now it's time to plan and implement. We evaluate this at the end of the school year and make the necessary improvements. Next slide. So these are our actionable steps. We feel that we can get greater parent participation if we administer this survey earlier and we do it during parent-teacher conference, which the last one is held in February. We feel that if we collaborate with principals, that they designate someone to monitor active parent weekly, because that's something the parents said, hey, we want to know, and that's something the students want to say, we want to know how we're performing, and that's important to them. Not only active parent, but we also want to monitor and implement attendance plans, and we'll talk about that later in another item. And we think it's important that elementary counselors, being that they see students on a weekly basis, that they begin to discuss things, have discussions with students about attendance. Attendance impacts a lot. We feel that the collaboration of the professional development and curriculum departments, that they will conduct training, and we have funds set aside to support that, and how to utilize technology in the classroom. It's more than just projecting something on the smart board, and we have smart panels, but getting the students interactively involved in that learning process. And as relates to PBIS, that office conducts training on meeting the social and emotional and behavior needs of students during monthly PBIS and interventionist meetings. And we feel not only with, that there should possibly be cross-functional teams to help implement a lot of these plans. And so ultimately, we want to move where the data not driving school improvement, we want to be where the data is driving school improvement, and we, because we have a needs assessment completed. And again, it's just not completing the needs assessment and meeting the requirement, but we want the actionable steps from the data is what's going to make it more meaningful to us. All right, are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. This is very interesting, and I appreciate you sharing this with the Board. I do have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One is regarding just the development of our assessment. Were these district-generated questions or were these a standard set of questions that come from?
It's a needs assessment. It, we, it's one that we've used in the past, and it is, we kind of selected from an item bank, so to speak, of questions that we felt were relevant to the district.
Okay, great. So the item bank is somewhat standardized?
Right.
That districts use?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, customarily, but then we identified the things that we particularly wanted to look at.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, under your actionable steps, and I know that this report has been in process while we are also engaged in our parent engagement and family activity engagement.
Yes, ma'am.
And we do have another meeting scheduled, and Dr. And we do have another meeting scheduled, and Dr. Halyer and I have been participating in this work. So, I'm just curious into something we can think moving forward, but a way to include and align what we are planning for September and this fall, how it will feed into and support the actionable steps that you had already, and your team had already identified.
Yes, ma'am. So, actually, a part, and we're in the process of putting that together now, part of federal programs, you have to have a committee of parents, staff, community members, that review and monitor the plan from a district level. So, we are in the process of identifying those individuals to make sure, once the FY19 application is released from the State Department, we are charged with putting a team together to look at the comprehensive needs assessment and to develop that plan to implement it and evaluate it.
Great. Hey, thank you. Board members, do you have other questions or comments?
There's some, there's some interesting findings in here that I think are just important to surface. You know, when you look at some of the statements, you know, my teacher makes sure that I'm ready to take district and state tests. 89% of students strongly agree or agree. My teachers work hard to help me pass coursework, you know, 85% of students agree or strongly agree. You know, again, I guess my question would be is, you know, how do we take this data and build on it? Those are high marks from students. You know, in some level may square those remarks of student perception with actual results, but also, how do we get the two more aligned, really, in terms of using the data to make the process improvements?
Right. Good question, Dr. Sevak. And so, our thought process is we empower how, each school took this survey, the district surveys compiled from what the schools did. So, we want the schools to really look at and see, look at their school data to see what improvements can be made because overall, the perception from our parents and students are great, but we need to figure out how we can improve on those things and align them because it's really school-specific, although we're looking at this as a district as a whole. But we encourage the schools to just really look at this and see what areas they can improve upon this coming year.
And what's the, I guess, leadership apparatus to make that happen? So, does that work with area superintendents and principals? Is it, how do you operationalize that?
In terms of addressing the plan?
Going down to the school level. Is it, I thought your point was important and insightful around that there's really, if you break these down, there's a school behind every one of these numbers, and then the person behind every one of these numbers.
Yes, sir.
And so, how do we operationalize the improvements being made down at the school level?
So, when you operationalize, you're talking about how do we look at it and put plans in place? So, what happens at the school level? Each school is required to have, according to our policy, a site council. And so, the site council reviews this data. And it's important to note that parents are to be a part of that as well as community members. And what they do is when they review this data and they look at the needs of the school, they develop a, an actionable plan to implement over the course of the school year, and all things focus on for students at minimum, meeting state proficiency regarding the rigorous standards. And that's the overall goal. How can we get students at minimum to reach proficiency? So, that's what their focus is on. Once they look at the data and look at the number of students at their school that are proficient in the various areas, everything revolves around that.
Okay, thank you.
This is interesting data, Dr. Murray. I was just wondering, how can this information be, you know, transmitted to the overall community, you know? Since, you know, we always get the negatives, so these are positive things that we could communicate.
Yes, ma'am, and I think we can post this information on our website to just, so that the community can have access to just look at it from what staff said, what parents said, and what students said about the district.
Thank you.
Board members, are there comments or questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Merritt. This is good news, and it's always good to hear the facts and let the data drive our
That concludes superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Item eight, information items only. Dr. Vicki Davidson, are you present? The executive director of Advanced Learning Programs and Services.
If we could pull up the report. Hello?
Hello.
Board members, Dr. Murray, I would like to present to you the Open Doors Gifted Education Program survey results for school year 2017, 2018. As part of the Mississippi Department of Education Standards 2013, our district is required to provide a report to our community. She's pulling it up. As she's locating the report, I wanted to also share that there are seven different standards that we have to review and evaluate each school year. The first standard is curriculum and instruction. The second standard is program administration and management. Standard three, program design. Standard four, program evaluation. Standard five is the social and emotional guidance and counseling of our gifted education students. Standard six is professional development, and standard seven is student identification and assessment. Based upon the survey results and the seven different standards that we had to evaluate, our district will either be rated as a level three, which is excellent programming, or a level four for exemplary programming. We do have a clearance scheduled at the district level next week, August 28th. Okay, she's not able to pull it up. Does the board, the board does have the report? Okay, all right. Okay.
We have a summary report. Will we have the full report?
Yes.
Access to the full report?
Mm-hmm. You will have access to the full report. I'll be sure to provide that to Dr. Murray to share with you. The last time I presented the results, I was asked to put it in a more reader-friendly format so that the public would be able to understand it, and I've done that for you tonight, and then I'll be able to provide the actual report to you through Dr. Murray.
So, you'll provide your summary as well as the actual report?
Yes.
And when could we expect that? Soon?
Tomorrow.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate you, and I always say, technology works when it works.
If we look at criteria one, we are either at a level three, which is above standard, or level four for curriculum and instruction. For criteria two, program administration and management standard, there are three guiding principles where we are rated as level two, which is still meeting standard. However, we have developed goals to address those particular guiding principles. Guiding principle two, the first one relates to the gifted education program being an integral part of the overall teaching and learning process in our district, and we have addressed a goal to make sure that that happens so that our students are receiving adequate services in all of their educational settings versus just in the pull-out program for gifted education. Guiding principle three, we are ensuring that we have positive working relationships with advocacy groups. Actually spoke with Ms. Jo LeVette from Ask for More Jackson this evening to ask if she would assist with that particular aspect of it so that we are addressing the needs of our community as well, based upon survey results. And guiding principle four, under program administration and management, this is actually the highest level that you can receive. Criteria three for the program design standard, we were rated a level two on the flexible grouping of students throughout the entire school system, and we want to ensure that we're doing that and we're differentiating instruction. Page three. We want to ensure that we're differentiating instruction, again, in all of our educational If you could scroll to page three for me? Criterion for program evaluation, we are rated level four in all of those particular guiding principles. Criterion five, the social and emotional guidance and counseling standard, we are rated level four in all of those. We are meeting the needs of our gifted education program students as it relates to their social and emotional needs. Criterion six, professional development, we are actually rated as level four. We do provide ongoing professional development to our gifted education program teachers as well as counselors. In addition, we provide overviews and technical assistance to our administrators as well on an ongoing basis. And the final criteria or standard is for student identification and assessment. In this particular standard, we are rated as level three and level four for many of the guiding principles, and we did receive a level two with this particular standard. However, that level two, again, is the highest that you can receive.
The highest that you can receive for that particular?
For that particular guiding principle. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members? We appreciate your work and your team's work in ensuring that we're meeting the high standards required to serve our students.
Dr. Davidson, I do have a question about this. This, thank you for this work. It seems very promising. In terms of the self-evaluation, what constitutes the self-evaluation? Who conducts it? How do we come up with this rating where we assume that we're exemplary or meet the standard or above standard?
Well, the self-evaluation, the instrument itself, does come from the Mississippi Department of Education, and we determine the results at the district level based upon each of our schools, the gifted education program teachers, meeting with their administrators or their leadership team to determine their particular rating, and our rating is based upon the findings from the schools.
Okay, and then some of these, such as meeting the emotional well-being of our students, is that done through some kind of evaluation of our students, or is that based on what the gifted teachers are telling our administrators?
No, we actually have various protocols that we use to determine what the levels of social and emotional wellness of our students are. And in addition to that, we tie in their interest inventories that are used, and we base that on the academic inventory, the social and emotional wellness inventory, and then we also have a career inventory that we use.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you.
We have no items, information, action items under item nine. Item 10, Ms. Miller, consent agenda items for finance.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray. Members of the board, I present to you two items under consent agenda finance. A, approval of disbursements and accounts payable and activity fund claims for July 28th through August 10th, and also, item B, recommendation to dispose of surplus property.
Board, do we have questions or comments for either of those items?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve items A and B under the consent agenda under finance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda items have been approved. Thank you, Ms. Miller. And thank you and Dr. Murray's work for your presentation at city council this morning. Thank you. Item 11, Dr. Sargent, items A and B, district-to-district transfer incoming and item B outgoing. You're going to pull some? Okay. Thank you, my colleagues. Do we have items that we want to pull from the consent agenda?
I would like to pull for discussion items C, D, G, H, and J.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. I would like to, with Dr. Merritt's permission, as we've talked earlier, to pull the item K until we work on the language of the MOA, and we have agreed to that earlier. So, we won't need discussion on that tonight, board. I just would like to pull that one. So, you would like to pull yours for discussion, right?
Just for question and discussion, yes.
Okay. So, how do we proceed?
Do we need to take action on amending the agenda to pull item K?
If you don't act on it, if you pull it, it'll be okay.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. So, jumping down to K, we have pulled K for consideration until after our parent engagement meeting on Friday at nine, and board members, we will have to use the revised language by noon Friday. Dr. Merritt and I are going to work together with Ms. Dr. Halyer to get that language as we want it, and then we will have a special call board meeting just on the telephone so that you can approve that. Do we need to vote on that pulling? No. Okay, thank you. Now, item C, D, G, H, and J, we're going to pull those till later for questioning, or now?
I think we can vote on the consent agenda and then...
Okay, so, we're going to vote on the consent agenda with those items pulled. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent agenda items with the exception of those noted by Dr. Sevak for further discussion.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
A second.
A second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those items have been moved. Now, we do need to hear from Dr. Sargent. Are we just going to approve all those as presented?
Dr. Sargent was approved.
Yes, the first one is item C.
Okay.
Attorney Shepherd.
Right. Thank you, we approve that. Thank you. Attorney Shepherd, item C and D.
Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board, you have before you for approval the policy AFA, which is the emergency closing of schools policy, and this policy sets for the authority for closing schools in emergencies. There is board authority for closure of schools as well as the superintendent's authority to close schools. It is an outgrowth of work that Ms. Turner and I did, and the policy committee made very good suggestions, and we incorporated those suggestions in the policy. The procedures are before you for information item only. The next item, if you'd like for me to continue, unless you have a question.
Should I ask my questions as we go through each policy, or should I ask them after?
You can ask them as we go through. It's your preference.
Okay. So, this policy, the first one specifically references the closing of schools. It does not reference the makeup of days, is that correct?
The policy does reference the makeup of days. We tried to take care of the problem that we had in the winter.
Okay.
In this policy.
And this squares with state law in terms of, and I was particular, there was a line in there about the 180 days, and I was, that was, that's specifically what I'm asking about.
It does square with state law. The problem that we had before was, of course, we didn't have a policy that said, that referenced the makeup days. Our policy just said that we were going to make up every day. And so, we tried to... And so we tried to avert that situation with this language.
Okay. And the other item I notice in there is we ran into the unfortunate event where we were not able to compensate classified staff at that time. This policy appears to rectify that issue, so if we were to have repeat circumstances, we would be able to compensate all staff throughout the district regardless of what position they're in.
Yes, we'd have administrative leave for all the employees. So it should take care of both those situations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next policy is CCC, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. And this policy says that the board will comply with the procedures that are set forth in the statute that talks about benchmarks and assessments, and it provides that objectives will be established at different intervals to evaluate the superintendent. Again, this is a policy that the policy committee wanted to review and look at and just make sure that it had language in there that was aligned to the state statute.
And was that the major change to make sure that it was aligned with?
It was, I think.
Yeah, that is, in fact, and this was the policy that the Mississippi School Boards Association suggested we need to make sure aligned with state statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve that one? Because that's all from Joanne, or keep that one?
What's the protocol? Should we approve them as we go, or should we approve them at the end?
You can approve them at the end, if you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving to item G, Leah Faulkner, Director of Parents and Education, the approval of a partnership between Cross Gates Baptist Church, the Arise to Read Program, and JPSD. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, board members. The administration submits for your approval, the partnership with Jackson Public Schools and the Arise to Read Program that is being sponsored by Cross Gates Baptist Church.
Thank you, board members. Do you have questions or comments for Ms. Faulkner?
I had some questions, Dr. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Faulkner. Did we, so has this been piloted in the district? Was that, or piloted in Memphis?
Well, it's, the program has been around in Memphis for a number of years, but as you know, for a number of years, Jackson Public Schools has offered book buddies. So we started last year with a program to try, engage churches in a more deliberate, data-driven decision. During that time, we implemented the Time, Talent, and Treasure Initiative. So Cross Gates Baptist Church brought this program to us, but what we did was piloted at Bates Elementary School for four weeks so that we could test whether or not it was effective before we presented it for approval and decided to implement it in multiple schools, multiple classrooms. So the data you have as part of the executive summary is that test-
Okay.
-that happened in Jackson Public Schools.
Those, and those data were really impressive-
Very much so.
-in terms of the pre-score on the STAR test and the post-score. I mean, in some instances, double, triple-digit gains.
Yes.
Where will the program be located in the upcoming year?
So we met with the, I met with the area superintendents, and they've given me a list of schools that, according to the data, has the greatest need. This is strictly for second-grade students. So what, once it's approved, what we need to do is approach churches that are closest to those schools to see if they have the interest and capacity to partner with the schools that have been identified. So there's a list of schools that we have, and we will then look at churches who will be willing. Cross Gates will provide the initial training and resources to get the program started, but what they want to do is partner with neighborhood churches so that they not only meet the need of the literacy supports, but that if there are other needs that the family needs, that church can stand alongside that family to meet those needs.
Do you have a sense of how many schools we're considering?
Right now, I have a list of seven schools, but I do have some churches who have expressed an interest that maybe are not in close proximity to the school, so we'll make the matches. But we want to make sure that it's an authentic partnership, and if it's a school and a church within the same neighborhood, that's really the goal of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
And other churches will have the opportunity to participate in this program as well, they just need to contact you.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Faulkner, we appreciate your work. Item H, Stephanie Harris, Director of Transportation, the approval of the agreement between Herman Sanders and JPSD.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To you all. On this afternoon, Transportation Department is requesting that we receive another CDL instructor for our bus drivers. In the past, we have had an individual that will assist us with getting the prospective bus drivers prepared for obtaining their CDL license. That person has now retired, and so we are in need of another individual to take this place. Herman Sanders is an individual that has been recommended by the, by MDE. He is a certified instructor for the state of Mississippi, so he can do training over the state of Mississippi to assist us with third-party testing, which is simply road testing, to help the drivers get their driver's license and certification, to have that certification card. So we are in need of this individual. We have some individuals that we need them to be certified right away. So we are definitely in need of having this position filled. Thank you.
Questions or comments, board members?
I just had, just a couple of questions. So again, I noticed it was for a small amount, and roughly 12 drivers. Is that aligned with your point? There's roughly 12 drivers right now that we need?
As of right now.
Okay, okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work. And Dr. Merritt, item J, approval of the memorandum of understanding with everyone graduate center, Johns Hopkins University School of Education, JPSD.
Yes, ma'am, recommend approval of this item, and we do have Dr. Richard Lofton that's present here this evening from Johns Hopkins, and I'll ask him to come up and assist in fielding any questions that you may have. I do want to note that the State Department this week, currently today, tomorrow, and Thursday, is hosting a statewide chronic absenteeism conference, and so it's been very informative thus far. As we are aware, we have two high schools that have the highest chronic absenteeism rate in the state according to the 2016, 2017 data, and we see that that is closely correlated to the graduation rate. And so just to provide you an operational definition of chronic absenteeism is that, one, we have 180 days of school, and if a student missed 10% of those 180 days or 18 days, they are considered chronically absent. The thing to note that constitutes that, that includes excused and unexcused absences as well as suspensions. And so there are three factors that we must really take note of when we talk about chronic absenteeism, but at this time, we will fill any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. There are a couple of questions that I have. One of the items that was listed in the national evaluation of my brother's keeper's Student Success Mentor Program was providing a larger system of supports, essentially wraparound services for students, and I was just wondering if you could speak to the district's ability to provide that element of the program?
In terms of, so in addition to that, Johns Hopkins will provide technical assistance in terms of a person. What we want to do is look at, really determine what we need in addition to that, once we have met with the staff person that they will, they will provide. With Title IV, there is room, if we need to look at additional staff, we can do that with supporting those efforts, but we know that it is something that we need to address in terms of, and determining what the wraparound services are and how to support it.
The item that I'm specifically pointing out is, it said that in all participating schools, the use of success mentors was embedded in a larger system of supports, which included weekly attendance data review meetings led by principals, better integration of youth and social service providers, and positive school-wide climate and attendance messaging efforts. And it says all of those components are replicated in this effort. I just wanted to ensure that as we take this on, that the items that the initiative indicates were critical for success will be part of our rollout and implementation.
Yes, absolutely. Usually, there is a weekly, well, two times a month, there's a weekly success mentor meeting where principals, if it's not principals, someone who the principal appoint will be able to talk to the mentors. The mentors then will be in contact with the mentees, and from there, we'll figure out what some of the situations are, what some of the reasons that are causing the chronic absenteeism, and then work with the, with some of the resources within the school to try to address that. We also, like Dr. Merritt was saying, that we will provide that technical support so we can help and work with you to, to work with the, within the school to develop some of those resources and find out what some of those resources are and work to try to get them to the students.
Okay. And Dr. Sevack, I think I understood your question more clearly. So each school has a multi-tiered system of support team, and not only does that team address academics, but it should be addressing behavior and attendance. And so that team, which consists of teachers, it may consist of a counselor depending on the school, or the interventionist, it's these groups, this group of individuals that will determine next steps because once a student, once their attendance has been identified as a problem, the district is responsible and that school is responsible for implementing an intervention to address that support that the student needs.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Dr. Merritt, and Dr. Lyons?
Dr. Lofton.
Dr. Lofton, thank you for your work, and here again, this is very much in sync with the work that the board is very interested in advancing around our family and parent engagement efforts to help our families understand how important attending school regularly is for a variety of reasons, foremost, for the success of our children, but it also impacts district operations as well. Thank you for your work. So, board members, are we now ready to approve items C, D, G, H, and J?
Madam President, I move that we approve those items together.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded twice that we approve items C, D, G, H, and J under the consent agenda items general. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, those items have been approved. Item 11, personnel, Sandra Lyons, approval of staff personnel matters.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters as listed in board material.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lyons. We did receive this information earlier. Board members, do you have questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve item A, staff personnel matters?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. We move to item 13, other, of the business. Attorney Turner?
Board members, as you know, over the course of the last several months, you have been going through your superintendent search process. You narrowed the candidates down to three, and then from there, you narrowed those three down to one. There are, as you know, some new eligibility requirements for serving as a superintendent that were put in place by the legislature as of January 1, 2017, and then subsequent to that, in May of 2018, we got some additional regulatory guidance from MDE with processes and new criteria that were available to appoint someone as a superintendent of schools. Given the board's selection of the final candidate that you would like to look at appointing as superintendent, you have opted to follow the process that the State Board of Education set out under those alternative regulations. And so what I have for your consideration is a resolution that is part of the packet that would be submitted to MDE to put that into place. So I'm passing out a proposed draft resolution for you to consider adopting. What the process requires is that the board has to go through and make a finding as to the qualifications. The qualifications require that the superintendent candidate has to have a master's degree or higher from an educational institution that was accredited at the time that the degree was conferred, and then the board has to make a finding that the candidate has six years of documented and successful leadership. That experience can be acquired either in a K-12 or higher ed context or a private context, for-profit, not-for-profit, but the board essentially can look at a candidate's work experience and make that, according to MDE, factual determination on whether or not the candidate has satisfied that. So Dr. Eric Green, who is the person that the board has looked at, this resolution sets out a process whereby the board has looked at his work history, and it sets out a draft of what you can look at of making what the law requires as a determination of fact that he meets those qualifications. So what would then happen is if the board approves this resolution, then under the regulatory process that MDE has set up, an application packet has to be sent to them. There's some form documents that the candidate himself has to fill out, their employment verification forms that have to be completed and sent out by prior employers, and then this resolution, which is called the appointment resolution, also has to be provided. If the board adopts this resolution tonight, I have the materials to compile that application packet. It has to be mailed to MDE, and I will mail it in. The process that I have advised that you follow is that, according to the folks at MDE, it takes about 10 to 15 business days that they will take. They do say that's a maximum period, but it's a 10 to 15 business day process that they would have to look at the application packet, and then they issue a three-year temporary license. So the candidate then has a three-year period to meet some additional education requirements, and if he's or she is successful at doing so, then he would receive the standard permanent five-year license that's subject to renewal. So that's kind of the process that we've talked about. You know, we'd submit the application package, we would wait for the candidate to receive that temporary license, assuming all goes well with the process at MDE, and then I would advise you that at that point, the board would be in a position to approve an employment contract with Dr. Green, but my advice has been that you wait to be sure that the process through MDE, you know, goes as smoothly as we hope and contemplate before bringing in anyone immediately to seat, and to sit in the seat of superintendent as a permanent superintendent. So if you have any questions with regard to resolution, I'll try to address them, or otherwise, I would present this for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Attorney Turner. We appreciate the work and legal advice and guidance you've provided this board through this process, and we have before us the resolution appointing Dr. Eric Green as superintendent of schools of the Jackson Public School District Board. Do we have any questions or comments for Attorney Turner? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent appointment resolution? May I so move? I so move that we approve this superintendent appointment resolution. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The resolution to appoint Dr. Eric Green as Superintendent of Schools has been approved by a vote of five-four and...
Five-one.
Five-one. Well, five-four. Five-one, thank you. Thank you so much. We now would like to recess in order to meet with the press. The Board and Dr. Murray and Attorney Turner will be there. And do I hear a motion to recess to meet with the press? And then we'll re-adjourn. Re-convene, excuse me.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we will, okay, hearing none, we will recess to speak with the press. Thank you.